All right, good evening, good evening. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being here tonight for the City of New Orleans Budget Meeting as we focus on the year of 2025. We have department leadership throughout the City of New Orleans who are present, and thank you so much for being here but for what you do every single day on behalf of all of our residents and all of the visitors of this city. Residents, thank you so much for joining us. I know that this budget meeting was postponed on the Sunday prior to the scheduled budget meeting. I lost, and we lost, this community, this city, lost just a great person, a great man in Bill Rousell. And Bill Rousell, his company, Bright Moments, is someone that we contract with, we partner with, with the City of New Orleans to stand up many of our public engagement meetings, along with, of course, our Office of Neighborhood Engagement. And with Bright Moments, in terms of their small but mighty staff, they're always boots on the ground for every event. And so that's really what prompted me and the team to say, let's postpone and reschedule. But definitely, that was the only reason, and I'm glad that we did. We want to thank UNO for hosting us this evening and in working with UNO, this was the most recent date, I would say, that we could activate this meeting looking towards its postponement. I also wanted to acknowledge that we have, who will be our moderator? We have Camille Woolworth. Where is Camille? There you go. That's right. So she will be our emcee for the evening. And so prior to, and I know I'm going to ask Jonathan Everett, Pastor Everett, to say a prayer, but we, who's doing this? Who's doing this? Okay. So, but before we get started and before I ask the pastor to come up, I did want to ask you all on my behalf to thank someone special who is with me this evening, really with us. She came in town for, last week, for the convention. Now, it was the, what's it called? No, I know the daughters, but it was the Shriners. Had over 15,000 visiting the City of New Orleans, and you know, we consistently host the Shriners, and they will be back on next year. But I have my godmother, Lynn V. Hurd, who is here. Lynn, oh, you got the picture up there. Lord have mercy. Don't kill me here. Don't kill me. But Lynn is my godmother. She has been a part of my family since I was about six. And I told my brother that she was in town, and he immediately, I see it up here, sent me this photo. Now, this was 34 years ago, almost to the date of August is when I came to the City of New Orleans at the age of 18. And you can see Lynn right there in the van as we were caravaning to the city. I'm in the back there doing something, I don't know what, getting ready, but my brother is tying some belongings on top of the van, and my grandmother has kind of opted out or copped out of the photo. But I just wanted to, and thank you so much for putting it up, because it really goes full circle for me. Next year will be 35 years that I came to this city. My full commitment has been to the City of New Orleans. My soul found its home. My godmother, my nanny said, let her stay, she wants to stay. And so now, full circle, here it is, and had no, no plans at anything to be elected, but surely not to be mayor of the City of New Orleans. But it is a great honor. But I want you to understand that commitment that I've had to this city for 35 years. I'm 52 right now, 18 in that van. Will not waver at all. I am absolutely imperfect, no doubt about it, but I do my job. And we do it together. So I want to say, thank you, nanny, but thank you, City of New Orleans. And so with that, absolutely, thank you, nanny. So with that, in New Orleans, say nanny. Okay. All right, so I'm going to ask Pastor Jonathan Everett, who serves, as you know, as the pastor of the Rock of Ages Baptist Church in the City of New Orleans. He really doesn't need any introduction, but I'm so proud of him. I know you all are in the community, you know of Pastor Everett. He steps up, he gets involved, and he really does engage young people, but people of all ages in this community. So without further ado, may we have a prayer to start, and then I will ask for the Pledge of the Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you tonight for our city's ability to move beyond our inabilities. Thank you, Lord, for our city's ability to move beyond our differences. Thank you for our city's ability to move beyond, Lord, our diversities. Thank you, Lord, tonight, Father, that we are trying our best to find intersections that help all of us find unity in our inner cities and corporately as we fight against these systematic woes. Thank you, Lord, Father, for a city that's striving to find integrity as we lead forward and find a way to unite every person in every silo, in every community, as we try to uplift each and every one of us. So we pray this meeting is exactly what you want it to be, that every voice is heard and every heart is felt. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, and then if we can stand for the Pledge of the Allegiance, I think that it is more than appropriate. And I'll ask Mr. Colin Arnold, our Director of Homeland Security, to lead us all.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So as I mentioned, we will be talking about and focusing on the budget for 2025. But prior to doing so, and as we move through it, I just wanted to make some brief comments and presentations, and I will call on members of the team to also speak before the public tonight. You know, the budgets of the City of New Orleans, and I would say particularly for my administration, which started in May 2018, we're a little over six years in. But we've always really focused on being holistic and in a way that gives hope to the future of the City of New Orleans, holistic in every manner, and that really has bubbled up from the community. Our first budgeting year was really 2019, right? Budgeting for, again, as we budgeted in 2018, but budgeting for 2019. In 2019, we really embraced some core values from the community. Public safety, looking through the lens of public health, investing in our infrastructure, our quality of life, economic development, good government, these were the priorities and the guiding principles for us doing our work. In setting the tone and focusing on these areas, we really looked at, and it required just a fundamental, non-sexy, but necessary investments in certain areas that all tie back again to these priorities. And I'll name just a few. One is the fair share agreement that we just had to take on in 2019, just to get a little bit more of what this city generates in terms of taxes, but get a little bit more from the state of Louisiana. Our taxes go to the state, and then a portion comes back. We needed more to invest in our infrastructure. I remember being at the state saying, hey, we host 19 million visitors a year. Just think about 40 people in every household flushing your toilets, using your streets, and the like. That's pressure on our infrastructure. Give us more. We had to take it on. We, one was told, no way, but we made it happen. In addition to that, it was really looking at how we can do business better. But first, we had to invest in our financial systems. We had four operating systems that didn't even talk. So we had to invest there. Again, non-sexy, you can't see it on the front end, but it's happening internally so that we can do better with your resources. That financial system, which we call brass now, talks well. We know who needs to be paid, when they need to be paid, and of course, this investment, right thing to do. And even with the most recent Legislative Auditor's report, when the City Council asked to come on in, asked them to come on in to city government to see how we were looking at and using our finances, or particularly, the system in place. Well, based on that, and that was recently reported, the findings from there, it ultimately became a validation to the city, to us, that the decisions that were made in 2019 were the right decisions, because here today, we're doing everything the right way, and even the recommendations, we're already implementing, because that was a part of the plan overall. Four systems into one, important. Even as it relates to our credit, in terms of improved credit rating, important for the City of New Orleans, an unprecedented, unprecedented bond sale measure, that the public approved $500 million, never happened before. But that credit rating, putting that money out for sale, it only allows for this city to get a great premium. We saw that on the front end in 2022. We're seeing it again on this year, having went to bond sale a couple of weeks ago. The Office of Houston Families, when we talk about public health, in terms of public safety, we looked at a holistic approach in terms of how we were going to meet people where they are, but particularly as it relates to crime in our community, not just NOPD could get the job done, or has the responsibility of getting the job done. So we put investments and made investments, of course, in these key areas. Now, in 2020, you all know better than I, things took a downturn, no doubt about it, and we know why, COVID-19, global pandemic. But you know what? It required us to make tough decisions. We saved lives. We were not only that hotspot that forced those tough decisions, it was necessary. But saving lives, it also made this city, in terms of bouncing back, better and stronger than we see many cities across the United States of America. But at that time in 2020, and in that budget cycle, and in that season, the team and I came before the public, and we said, we have to think about the recovery of our city in terms of, over a span of time, looking at 2020, but also 2021, '22, '23, '24. And we said, we should see signs of a full recovery as we move into 2025. So the budget that we're talking about tonight is for 2025. But this is the good news. We've stayed the course. We've managed resources well, and we have progress to stand on. At this time, before I move forward, I'm going to turn it over to our CAO, Gilbert Montano, who will talk more specifically, I would ask him to do, in regards to our revenues, in terms of how we focused on recurring revenues from 2020 to 2025, and how that really sets the tone in terms of where we need to be moving from '24, what, into 2025. Gilbert, thank you so much. Let's show him some love. And you can take it from here.
Would you like me to come up here?
You do, whatever makes you come.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, for the overview and your leadership. Certainly, we've had some very challenging roads. We've had a lot of tough decisions that we've had to make, and I know not everyone's always been happy with some of the decisions, but as she said, it is for the long term that we feel like we've budgeted for some of these very specific outcomes. I'll be as brief as I possibly can to try to explain some of the complexities of our budget. As she said, we've never really had a baseline year, if you look at our overall trajectory, both on the revenue and the expenditure side, because of a couple of major things, one being most specifically COVID-19 and the effects that had on our revenue. What we wanted to make sure and manage through was an overall plan and path forward in a three-year cycle. So what Mayor is just talking about and what we're entering now is the last of our three years toward our overall cycle. And why it was important to look at the three-year cycle is based on some of the sensitivity analysis of where we would be with our revenue, whether it be sales tax or property growth. We knew what to expect for the most part, and we've been able to nail that prediction pretty accurately. So what does that mean? Over the course of the amount of revenue loss, we did inherit, thankfully, and based on Madam Mayor's advocacy, ARPA dollars that we were able to supplant over the course of our revenue loss. What this meant, what this means for the overall organization is that we have had a structural imbalance for a few years as we went through some of the sales tax revenue growth that we're projecting to come into plateau at the end of this year. So by supplanting some of those revenue dollars for ARPA, we were able to manage and provide raises for our individuals, or we invested in public safety, significant raises for our employees, because tangentially, we had the great resignation period where we were unable to hire and had a lot of tough times trying to fill some of those vacancies. So fast forward to where we are today, we are near the completion of that, and as a result, we've been able to basically stow away almost $100 million of our savings fund. And why that's important, and I want to highlight that, is because that's built into our overall thoughtful analysis when we're preparing the budget, and it's absolutely necessary. She mentioned, we went to a bond sale, and we had to face the credit rating agencies, which is a third-party validation of S&amp;P, Moody's, and Fitch. And what they highlighted, and is most important, is what we've been able to build over the last three years, which is that $100 million savings fund. That's on top of the $33 million. So in summation, what I want to highlight for this projected year is that our growth is going the way we hoped and anticipated. We have managed our resources to a way that we feel that our recurring dollars have matched our recurring expensive. We've stowed away almost $133 million. And why that's important to be protected and thoughtful of is that you never know what you can anticipate in the City of New Orleans, whether that is a disaster, a storm, or anything of the sort. And previously, for decades, there had only been a minimal amount saved. So now we have a significant amount that we can lean up against, whether it's for cash flow reasons or anything of the like. But most importantly, I think that it demonstrates, based on our validation from our credit agencies, that we're on the right track, and we hope and anticipate with your input to build the next budget based on the plans and the progress that we've made thus far. And that is an over-investment on public safety, quality basic services, and in some form, infusion of our economic development perspective. So with that, I do want to thank Councilmember Green for attending. I'm not sure if other councilors are here, but you've been a partner with us throughout, and so has the City Council. We had some tough sledding, and I know that we will continue to do so through the next budget cycle, and I want to thank Romi. This is her first time at the table, and I look forward and welcome the mutual benefit that we can provide the citizens as we develop and build this budget, of course, with the blessing of the mayor. So Mayor, in closing, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve. I want to thank you that we have had the ability to really make strategic investments, as you said, sometimes unsexy things that will never be seen or heard by the public, but we know will square the city off for the decades to come. And I think that's an important, smart business decision that we made over the course of time, that maybe isn't glamorous, but certainly will pay absolute dividends over the course of the next 20, 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gilbert. And Gilbert mentioned, give it up for him. Give it up for him. Councilmember Green is here. Thank you for being here. I thought I saw Councilmember, there you go, Councilman Thomas is here as well. Thank you for being here. And you know that the budget, I would say, a balanced budget, projected budget is presented to the council. They do their budget hearings, and then they have the responsibility of adopting that balanced budget by December the 1st by law. So thank you, councilmen, for being here. As Gilbert mentioned, you know, in set the tone in terms of our financial position, he underscored, you know, we, the gap of $100 million that we had to bounce back from, but that's also, that's also speaking to the $70 million that the city was never fully reimbursed for, for expenditures or expenses that we incurred fighting COVID-19. That money, initially CARES Act money, went to the state, and we had to go through the state. That's why I know for a fact, I fought almost single-handedly in the state at that federal level so that the City of New Orleans could get a direct allocation. And it is because of that direct allocation that we have been able to stand ourselves up and to be better for it. So things just don't happen just because. You know, we could be in a totally different situation had we not gone to bat for that and spent those dollars wisely. What I want to do right now, and as Gilbert mentioned, it is Romi's first time before you ask officially, the CFO of the City of New Orleans, I believe the first woman CFO, but Romi, yeah, love you. And I'm going to have, thank you. And Romi's going to talk very briefly again about the revenues of the city from her perspective.
Good evening, and thank you. What we want to highlight, I want to give you a financial perspective of where we are and how we got here. The city experienced a cyber attack in 2019. We were recovering from the cyber attack that led into 2020. Our matigrade that we had in 2020 was unprecedented. We had extremely high visitors in the city. Spending was up, but as you know, that was a precursor to COVID-19. So what happened then, because the city heavily relies on sales tax dollars, it impacted us substantially. We are grateful for the CARES Act, the ARPA money. We were able to secure $388 million to fill that gap, but we are still in recovery. We are still in recovery. That's important for you to understand. Yes, it did fill some holes, but not all those holes. Okay? Because during COVID, we had job insecurity, local spending went way down, but tourism was nonexistent because the world shut down. So we rely heavily on not only local spend, but tourism dollars as well. So what we've seen is, because we faced an unprecedented financial crisis, that is where the CARES Act money filled the gap. We moved into 2021, the Mayor Cantrell's administration was transparent on the challenges that we were to face. And once we saw that the world opened up again, the tourism resurgence helped us to rebound. But not only that, the local spend, because jobs, we were able to secure those jobs, the locals started to spend as well. We realized that both things occur, and we, both things are important to us. We, these are a few financial highlights here. The general fund tax revenues increased by $16.5 million. That was primarily due to the sales tax increase because of local spend as well as tourism returning. Property tax assessments, there's a quadrennial reassessment done by the assessor that results in higher property taxes for some and an increase in tax collections. We did have fines and fees that increased, traffic fines and fees, and miscellaneous revenues increased due to various factors. The expenditures increased by $272 million. That was because we were able to use CARES Act money for public safety expenses in the previous year. Once those revenues had been expended, it now hit the general fund once again. General fund balance decreased as a result of increased expenses. The cash and investments were flat at $234 million, and we realized our municipal retirement system, the pension fund, increased by $20 million in 2023. We realized a 12.5% return on that, on those investments.
Thank you so much, Romi. Give Romi some love. This is important information. I know the numbers can be boring, you know, but this is a budget meeting, and it's just very important. What I will do now is just go through some of the progress in terms of that we've been making in 2024 and budgets that we have been dealing with, not just 2024, but even in the past, leading up to where we are and where we need to go as a city. Now, this will be my last, I would say, budget meeting for the City of New Orleans next year, right? Next year, 2025, is an election year, although we will engage the community and structure a budget for 2026, that will not be under the Cantrell administration. So I take this very seriously in terms of where we are, how we want to continue to move forward, leave it better than we found it for the next leadership of the City of New Orleans. That's how we roll. We are forward thinkers. We do not try to set up traps. We want this city to progress long term, and so these investments need to last, and that's how we're built, and that's what we do. We do the job. So as it relates to that, and how we have managed through investing in areas that are important to the residents, as I mentioned, that framework, so public safety, for example, we have made massive investments. Now, we turned the map around, I would say, by heavily investing in youth in this city, looking at root causes, specifically working with our young people that have touched the line, or crossed the line, or we don't even want them to get to the line. We have been intentional about that. Standing up programs and staying with those programs consistently, that I know has had an impact on the reduction in crime. We have focused on, of course, prevention. We're focused on victim support. The New Orleans Police Department focusing heavily on retention and recruitment, making sure that we put millions in regards to tools and facilities, even as it relates to whether it's drones or the fleet, you name it, K-9, our K-9 officers, if you will. I heard from one of the captains say, hey, we haven't seen this investment in over 60 years relative to our Canines. It's not the dogs have been living for 60 years. It means that how we, as a city, has made an intentional investment, and even in terms of training the trainer. So again, building the capacity within the City of New Orleans and relative to public safety, but looking through that lens of public health, that also speaks to, again, whether it's the crime lab, of course, the attrition rates, I will say, based on these investments, NOPD, I'm talking. Prior to the investment, we were at attrition of 14%. We're down to 6%. That's huge. It means that it's working. Our investments are paying off. Even as it relates to the City of New Orleans leading the nation in violent crime reduction, again, not happening overnight, but doubling as it relates to the national standards. This city, big deal. Give it up. New Orleans Police Department, all of our partners in our community that's touching our youth, but even as it relates to, I'm thinking about you, Chief, when you say 71% reduction in juveniles being involved in crime in this city. Over a year ago, all, we were all afraid, right, saying it would never, never curb. We did that, again, collectively, but being intentional about how we invest in our people, both our residents and, of course, our police force. But public safety, we don't look at it, again, just in terms of NOPD. Meet with all my chiefs, all of us, in terms of a team, that's FIRE, that's EMS, that's Homeland Security, that's 911, that's 311. These areas have also been invested in by millions of dollars, and we're seeing the returns on that. And I believe Chief Samron, you said, in terms of our capacity, EMS staffing, we're now about 70%. That's high for the City of New Orleans, but we're making progress. This is also as it relates to FIRE, again, having academies promoting within, we're doing the work. But again, looking through the lens of public health, heavily investing in the Health Department. But even as it relates to force multipliers, so I talked about, and you all lifted up, the mobile crisis unit relative to our mental health. Absolutely, that investment has paid dividends. We're seeing the returns on that. We're freeing up the burden of our officers, but we're meeting our people where they are with the resources we know that they need. I'm going to transition here, even as it relates to investing in our infrastructure. We know that that's there, but I'm going to go right on into quality of life, because it ties right there in terms of public safety and public health. We know as it relates to that, we've invested heavily in speaking and learning and listening from the public on our sanitation contracts. You know that we had to rebid all of them. When I came in, it was a seven-year on those, seven-year on those contracts that were signed in 2017. But again, we're listening to the public, we had to do something. So what did we do? We put them out to bid, and now we have four new contracts on the street. We're seeing the results. You don't hear the noise, but I will say, it's come at a cost. The increases relative to sanitation are now at $53 million. That's an additional $27 million that we're paying, but we'll have to deal with that in the future. We will, because we did not increase that fee, right? And yes, we did go to one day a week, but it costs money. But we're seeing the results on that. Even as it relates, again, to code enforcement, quality of life, we heard from the public doing something about blight, you know, getting, making more, seeing more activity relative to demolishing properties that are in imminent danger of collapsing, or just removing the trash out of people's eyes, the dirty dozen we came up with. Also, as it relates to affordable housing, the team has been doing a yeoman's job there, making sure, again, that we're investing heavily in a pipeline of development, shovel-ready projects, not allocating resources only to sit there, and though the units don't come and though the units don't come online, we're seeing the benefits there. Also, as it relates to $54 million we dedicated, creating over 2,500 units in the city of New Orleans. One of my favorites here recently, The Grove Place in Holly Grove, 32 affordable housing units permitted. This is a big deal for our city. We know that we implemented the Healthy Homes Registry and that's really working, I would say. We're wanting it to work to get our people living in better quality housing as they deserve. Quality of life speaks to what we heard from our community. Our unsheltered population in the city of New Orleans needs to be treated with dignity, with respect. Meet them where they are, wraparound services, holistic approach. And old Nate Fields, I see you. People love you, Nate. Give it up for Nate. But you know what? Those encampments, they were real. We've closed six in the city of New Orleans, moving over 167 people into permanent housing, but the need is still there. So that will remain, again, a priority as we look at 2025. It has to be. We also make sure that we're continuing, of course, to invest in our infrastructure. No doubt, that's what I told you, fair share was all about it because we knew that we needed multiple revenue sources to do better. We came in, we had less than 1% of the $2.4 billion allocated to this city in 2016 was spent. We had to go to work very hard, very fast. I know disrupting neighborhoods and disrupting the daily quality of life, but necessary. We have drainage work that's being replaced, drainage pipes and investments that are happening that haven't happened in over 125 years. We won't see this again in our lifetime. So we're wanting to do it right, do it better, making sure that this city, again, is better off because of it. We have 206 projects that were completed, over $959 million. 34 projects under construction right now totaled at $685 million. You really can't make this up. And the city of New Orleans is spending more federal money on infrastructure than you see in any city in the United States of America. It is real and it is true. It's a fact. And then even as we think about with our infrastructure, it's our capital projects as well, 26 projects this year. I'm all excited, you know, 43 million is going. But cutting that ribbon on Skelly, on Skelly Rub, Bull, War My Heart, that was a promise made and one kept in the city. Even as it relates to our utility of the Sewerage and Water Board, that fair share was necessary because that allowed this city to activate under construction, real right now, a power complex that will provide the redundancy that we need to keep our pumps working to pump water out. But guess what? We need to complete it. We need that second phase done. Remember, that's that 29 million that you've heard me talk about at the state level for capital outlay that was expected to come to the city of New Orleans over a three-year period, meaning got to this year, we didn't get it. That was tied to the second phase of the power complex. So we're working with the state. They have us, we're completing a hero application to the federal government. That is the workaround that's been provided by our governor at, at this time. That will require a $17 million match that right now we don't have and we'll work towards it, but we don't have it. But that is not an adequate solution, but I'm bringing it up because it's real. And how it's real is you remember, we had, we had a, a big issue a couple of weeks ago as it relates to our water supply, right? And so with that, we had to have, we go into a boil water advisory because we had, we were impacted there. But one of our team members was severely injured. You know, lost an eye, is still recovering. But if we complete Phase Two of our power complex, that's connecting our water supply and water access in terms of that redundancy, that power, that will prevent boil water advisories in the future, but most importantly, eliminate the need for our employees to go in dangerous environments, that they put themselves on the line. But again, we're working and looking at solutions. That second phase is one of them. Also, as it relates to the municipal auditorium. Oh, you remember, oh, how hell broke loose when I said we have to spend this federal money allocated to the municipal auditorium or the city of New Orleans would lose it. It was on deadline. You can't make it up. Well, I said, in community, you know, involving the community at the time, there was a thought about City Hall. But more importantly, it was about investing in the municipal auditorium. But it's okay to stop. It's okay to listen a little bit further and more. And it resulted in a partnership with Save Our Souls, that is our partner, in renovating and, I would say, reimagining the municipal auditorium as well as Armstrong Park as a whole. But that's the benefit, looking at things holistically, going deep and doing something better. This also speaks to climate resiliency. You know, the infrastructure in terms of green infrastructure, hundreds of millions will continue to invest there, systems to hold water, work in collaboration with our utility so that, again, the city is safer when rain comes because it will. Economic development, that's another area. We continue to focus there. We have, of course, the $2.4 million, I would say, in the Claiborne Corridor in Innovation District. That's, again, investing in our people. We were awarded ARPA money, I was talked about, but we've created a program, the Economic Mobility in Motion, that's activated right now, $5 million given to 10 nonprofit organizations so that they can do the work with our people, hands-on, again, to get things done. The Mayor's Office of Workforce Development just continues to connect job seekers to high-paying jobs in the city of New Orleans and high-demand industries. It matters. And also, as it relates to, of course, workforce development and training in these areas, green infrastructure, jobs of the future, which are right now. We're also, you know, very excited about how we have structured or debundled contracts to give our people a better shake so that they can do business in the city of New Orleans and at a, a higher scale, I would say. We're also, that makes me think about the property management's trade contracts that we recently activated. Because you know what? We're having to deal with facilities. Now, we've been dealing with facilities and really investing in them over the past couple of years, but there is a need for us to go deeper as we look into 2025. But even deeper, as we know that we're having to adapt to the climate that has already changed. The pressure that it's putting on our buildings, we have to do something and I really want us to continue to invest there. But I spoke about those trade contracts because those have been activated, again, giving our business owners a fair shake to do work in their city and improving the environment in which our people work. And of course, I'm telling you, we've invested more in youth employment. Again, we're seeing the results, not just as it relates to Workforce Development Office, but even as it relates to Nord See. Nothing stops a bullet like a job. We understand that and we need to continue to invest there. Also, what I would like to add before I close and we'll get to Camille and she will moderate, move us through comments and questions coming from the listening audience as well as the public here this, this evening. But before I do, I do want to hit just good government. And I know Gilbert touched on this as well in terms of how we've invested in the employees that do the work every single day running the city of New Orleans. You know, your only, only good is the people you surround yourself with. And if we didn't have the over 4,000 city employees, none of this work would get done. But thanks to them and making sure that we're investing in them, that cost of living adjustment, we made sure that we went deep with that. We even structured it to be a one-time, I mean, or a lump sum payment. But again, it's how we have done these wage increases, I would say, over the course of a three-period, a, a three-year period, 2.5%. So we're baking that into, as we look at 2025, because we know that we're not there yet. And the only way that we're going to get there is that we continue to invest in the people who do the work and show up every single day on behalf of you all who are here. Even as it relates, and I'm going to touch real quick, the Office of Cultural Economy. Now, Romy touched on, you know, sales tax dollars and how being a destination city, it does matter. It does, not just for our local economy, but we know it also matters for the state. But we're talking about the city of New Orleans. And so that fair share that I mentioned in terms of going into infrastructure, we also thought about human infrastructure and that was for our cultural community. And it's, we have to be intentional about investing in the cultural bearers to preserve the culture of this city, which is the most Afrocentric city in the United States of America, and it is necessary that she continues to live on. And so in a three-year period alone with that hotel motel tax, you know, we redirected that to culture. And over three years, we've invested $13 million directly into the cultural community, not marketing them, but investing in them. And I know that that is proven, it's proven to be effective. We're making lives different in the city of New Orleans. And so we'll continue to manage through, no doubt. As we've done, we do the job. And throughout all, in spite of cyber attacks, building collapse that took three of our people, tornadoes, hurricanes, COVID-19, social unrest, inflation, supply chain, capacity issues, the great resignation, violent crime increasing, reelection, recall, allegations, investigations, orchestration, political trickery, guess what? We've stayed the course and guess what? You have delivered, I'm talking about my employees now, have delivered for the city of New Orleans. You've kept going, you've not been distracted. Because that's what we're here for, to do a job. And I want the public to understand that we do our job, will continue to do our job in spite of anything that comes our way because we face challenges to fix them and not just for a short period of time. So I'm not looking at 499 days and say, oh, stop right there. I'm looking at 500 for the next leadership to step on in and lead this city even further. That's what the Cantrell administration is all about. So with that, thank you, Ms. Camille. Get us going. And, and thank you for, um, I, look, I didn't mean to take your job. Okay, Ms. Camille?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
But, um, we do the job.
What do you think of that, Nana? Pretty good, huh? She's good. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor, thanks for having me to moderate this discussion once again and reminding everybody that we do have transparency to ensure that city government is working for all of you. We are now going to get to the question and answer portion of the program. Just a few housekeeping notes. Cards have been passed out. If you need a card, raise your hand. There are people walking around the room to give you one. If you have one with a question, please hold your hand up. Someone will come pick it up. Also, we did use on the city's website a QR code, so some people did provide questions there. So we will have those questions to go through as well. And we will go through the online questions first, followed by those that were submitted and that will be submitted here this evening. If the same question was submitted multiple times, we'll group it together and respond only one time. We ask that you keep your question concise, to the point, keep it relevant, please. Write it clearly because I'm old and I'm going blind.
You too?
Yes, ma'am.
How last you seen?
Well, that's, look, personal summers are another, that's another, that's another story.
But one other thing I want to interject here, Ms. Camille, for the public. We do have our department leadership. So your city leadership is in the room. And so you know how I do. I say, get me straight, right? Get me straight if you need to. I'll take the question or the comment, but then I also kick it over to the leadership. And it's always, I love this, because it's a great way for the public to understand and see in real time that you have capable, talented, experienced individuals working in city government that deliver on your behalf every single day. So with that, Ms. Camille.
All right, let's get started. First question. Madam Mayor, this one pertains to housing. You did touch on it, but here is the question. How does the 2025 fiscal year budget prioritize funding for fair and affordable housing, particularly for the justice-impacted individuals and other marginalized communities? Given the critical role that stable housing plays in supporting successful reentry, are there specific allocations or new initiatives planned to address the significant housing gaps in these populations?
Right, so housing continues to be in affordable housing, right? Continues to be a priority for the city of New Orleans. And as long as we have people having to live on our streets, it will continue to be that priority. We will continue to leverage federal money through HUD that has flowed from HUD to the city of New Orleans and then is placed out on the street in terms of partners that we, that respond to our NOFA, Notice of Funds that are available. This comes through the Office of Community Development. These notices are made public so that you know what funds we have. The allocations change as it relates to HUD, so that number fluctuates. But when we put that NOFA on the street, our partners respond to it and then they're selected in terms of what partners we work for, whether that's the St. Bernard Project, Rebuilding Together. It really goes on and on. I have Tyra who's here. Where's Tyra? Tyra, there, yay, there you go. Tyra, come on, yeah, get this mic going. There you go. So Tyra will be able to speak specifically, but we will continue to do what we've done, leverage every dollar and making sure that we have those investments for soft seconds. Also, we have to think about our rental community. This city spent more federal money, standing up that rental program. And let me tell you, when the federal government said we still have money and what cities is doing the job? New Orleans, every time, hand up, hand up. And guess what? We got the money. So, Ms. Tyra.
You did a good job so far because you didn't cover it all. But that is true. And one thing that the mayor said, all of our funding comes directly from federal government. So it comes and it's restricted. So it's used for the population, for our, those that have income, 80% AMI. So what does that mean? A household of four, you're looking at an income of like $90,000. That is not a lot. The Rental Assistance Program that we stood up, we have expended $83 million for that program. We have assisted over 28,000 households, providing rental assistance. And from that number, that 28,000, 9,000 was actually for our households just for utilities assistance. So as we get the money, as money comes in, we will continue to fund those projects. We will continue to do more creation of housing, as the mayor says, that comes through the NOFA process, so.
Thank you so much. Yeah, go ahead, Gilbert.
Just wanted to add one, one new thing. So this was the first time ever during our bond process, as we mentioned previously.
Thank you, because I had it right here, yep.
Okay, you want to just?
No, go ahead.
We had never traditionally in the state of Louisiana utilized capital funds, bond funding for affordable housing. So under the administration, mayor's administration, this was the first year ever that we actually went out to the market to purchase taxable bonds for the purposes of affordable housing and that equates to close to 30 million, if I'm not mistaken?
32.
$32 million. And I think that's probably one of the largest and most impactful things that had never been done, but tried here and now we're moving forward on that. So I think that the capital program is, is a vital part. And while, can I say one more thing, Mayor?
Absolutely.
One of the things I was remiss not saying is when you build a budget, it's all based on revenue. Revenue is how you build and design your budget. Last year, both the mayor and the council made a very tough decision on behalf of the residents not to raise the millage. That would have been an additional $41 million that they knew the public would have a very challenging time paying for with all the rising costs of everything. So we kept our revenue flat, although we had the ability to raise that millage, what would have equated $41 million. So as we build our budget, our revenue does remain flat with the exception of some major events like Super Bowl, Taylor Swift and the like. But I did want to highlight that we are building off a flat budget because we did forego that millage increase on behalf of the residents moving forward.
Yep, thank you, Gilbert, for adding that. And then I also wanted to add the fact in regards to affordable housing. The public did something, as I mentioned, unprecedented by voting to allow the city to sell the 500 million in bond sales. But what you did that was also unprecedented? You built in affordable housing. You said economic development, well, you said affordable housing and you said infrastructure and we're doing that. And so with that, again, unprecedented, but we have 25 million going right into affordable housing from the bond sale. So that's in addition too, and that's how we're activating and using your money, but using it wisely. Ms. Camille.
All right, let's move to code enforcement. Are landlords held accountable for frequent code violations on their property? Abandoned vehicles, aggressive dogs off of the leash, drugs being sold out of their properties, utility thieves, unsafe stairs, balconies or porches and constant trash all over the property? and constant trash all over the property? Mayor, who regulates these, out of parish or state landlords?
Okay, so as it relates to code enforcement, I know we have our director, Anthony Davis, Director Davis, who's here. We have Thomas Mulligan in terms of OBES, which this is under that umbrella. Now, because this was a priority on last year in terms of building our 2024 budget, you know, we increased code enforcement by ten million dollars. And just for that purpose, to hire up relative to inspectors and the like, we're still hiring, but we're doing the work. So what I will ask, Director Davis, you have anything to add here?
So good afternoon. Yes, code enforcement is responsible for some of those projects that just mentioned, but a lot of those that was in that question are across multiple departments. We're responsible for BLIC. We've been very aggressive with BLIC this year in, in, in holding owners accountable, bringing them through administrative hearings. And we will continue to do that for the rest of the year. So yes, that is code enforcement responsibility. We do hold homeowners, business owners, or owners in general, period, accountable for that property. That's been our motto all year since the department became a department, is that there are no exemptions and everyone is held accountable.
Thank you so much. All right, Tom, anything to add? Got it? All right, very good. Ms. Camille.
All right. How will public safety be highly prioritized and invested in from a preventative and holistic standpoint, such as mental health, youth programming, education, quality services, rather than another year of the city's budget going disproportionately to policing?
Okay, so as it relates to public safety, it's always under the lens and looking through the lens of public health. And we're investing and we will continue to invest holistically. So in those areas, as I mentioned earlier, from youth programming, not only on the, 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 what do you call it? The perpetrator side, but even the victim's side, that's important as well. But it's that holistic, mental health services, even for our young people. We put ten million dollars into Thrive Kids, which is providing mental health services to children in our public school system, anyone who needs it for over a three-year period. We're doing that because we've been listening. But guess who we've been listening to as well? Our young people, our youth. Every engagement, they say, oh, this is what we need. And because of them, we're funding it. So this is over a three-year period that goes into 2025. It goes into 2026 and above. So listen, we will continue to invest heavily, but we are not defunding any police. But we are looking holistically in terms of how we invest in public safety. It matters. And as it relates to public safety, what I will say, you know, we're investing thirty million dollars on a system where that would ensure that all systems within the criminal justice system talk. And this has been created by our public safety leaders. They've all, all bought into it. They said, this is what we want. I want to say mark twenty-three, but I may get it wrong. What is it? Forty-three? Okay, got it right. Well, no, I had it all wrong. I'm dyslexic sometimes. But what I'm saying is thirty million dollars into this system will be huge for the city of New Orleans. And it will live on literally for decades. But these are the type of investments that we're making. So when everyone's talking and we know that we're moving and using the same data, it only helps us get better. It helps us also create a safe environment that we all need. But we're not letting up on how deep we're going into root causes at all.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I have two questions related to the same issue, which is roadwork. So I'm just going to combine the two. All right, what are the plans to increase the availability updates on the various roadwork projects, non-Super Bowl construction? I've heard that there may be plans to put updates on Google Maps, but I've seen no progress. Merging the second question, the condition of so many streets is dreadful, dangerous, embarrassing. We submitted a 311 service request two years ago, still waiting about the deterioration of our street. Nothing's been done, no one's responded. What can we do about that? We pay high property taxes, but don't receive the service necessary to improve the quality of life.
Okay, what I will say is 311, you did the right thing in terms of reporting it, but it did get to, I know, to the right department. But depending on the work that's needed, then that will determine where that project is in queue. And if it's something that's already been scoped, and where is it in the universe of infrastructure improvement in the city of New Orleans? We have work to do, no doubt about it. That's why we have to continue to invest in our infrastructure. You're seeing that work, yes, is being done all across the city. And unfortunately, it is not painless. We hope when we try to make it as painless as possible, but it's necessary. And another thing, we're learning. Not one time in the history of, in New Orleans that this much work has been done at one time. So there will be complications because of that. But the good news is that we, we're getting better with time. Doesn't mean that we don't have any challenges or issues, even as it relates to the contractors that we have to hire to do the work. But we've been very aggressive on that front as well, putting resources to have a program managers onsite and the like and moving through. What I will do, and I know, Camille, you will highlight this for me so I'll know who it is, and they will get a response because they said they did not or have not received a response. And we will be able to address specifically their issue or concern in their area that, the area that they're speaking on. I have Joe, I know Joe is here. I got my, my DPW team here. Anyone want to step up? Where's, um, Rick? By the way, I see you, man. Don't be hiding, come on now.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we will be responding. The JIR program continues on. It will continue to rebuild streets in the city of New Orleans. Yes, we are doing some work downtown and in the French Quarter. But with the bond sale that recently happened, we'll be able to spread that money around the city, across the city, not just in downtown.
Yep. Right, and they did mention, we call it the summer of Super Bowl. It is not just about the Super Bowl, but it is about the Super Bowl, meaning in preparation for the Super Bowl that's coming in 2025. But the opportunity we have, these infrastructure projects need to happen anyway. So we're doing them, we're getting them done, and they're going to live with this city for years to come. But we're doing it and you will see the investments also across the city of New Orleans. There will also be an investment of over three million dollars into our nonprofit community across the city of New Orleans due to Super Bowl. But we're calling our meeting Supergraw because two weeks, three weeks after Super Bowl is Mardi Gras. But make no mistake about it, we do understand the work is happening. We also understand there's a need for more work. That's what I want you to know. But we're getting it done. And let me tell you, when I can look at Calhoun Street uptown, now thirty-five years ago, coming to Xavier Calhoun, I would say this is the worst street in New Orleans. I got many more now. But this is the worst street in New Orleans. But when I pass Fountain Blue and I look down Calhoun and I see the massive reconstruction of Calhoun, I say, yeah, I know that wasn't done thirty-five years ago, but it's done right now. So what I'm saying is progress is happening. It is. You can see it, but there's more to do, no doubt about it. Camille.
Okay, and there's another roadwork. I'm going to say it's specific to Lakeview. What we're going to do, if you have a specific question about a specific area or a specific address, you may meet with those folks after the meeting. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll take it.
After the meeting, okay. Next question. Why are there landscaping crews planting plants where the homeless encampments were when Parks and Parkway has a forty-seven-week backlog of citizen requests for tree trimming of city-owned trees?
Well, it depends on the projects and really the funding sources for those projects, but also leveraging where we're doing roadwork. Some of the projects that we're doing in terms of infrastructure do call for the beautification that comes along with it. But I know that I have Park and Parkway's here, Michael is here. Also, they mentioned DPW, I believe. But we'll get to Park and Parkway's.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Regarding the tree backlog and the trimming request and removal request, the mayor and the administration has devoted over three-point-four million dollars to reducing that backlog. And so in years past, we were past the year mark. And we're currently between seven to eight months to get that, those requests complete. So we're continuing to chip away at that. And we have additional funding through '25 from ARPA and other funding sources to continue to reduce that backlog.
Yep, and the good news is there is that we have done a thorough assessment across the city relative to the needs, even as it relates to our urban canopy. We have goals in regards to how many trees that we need to plant. We definitely need in terms of helping us live with water. We've recently received an eight-million-dollar grant from the USDA Urban and Community Forestry for, again, tree planting in the city of New Orleans. The backlog is real, but as mentioned, we put money there. We'll continue to move that program forward and we should see results. Anything else to add?
Additional funding from, through ORS for, through the EPA as well, close to fifty million. That covers partially tree planting and also tree maintenance as well.
Very good. Thank you so much, Michael.
All right, housing. How can we increase funding for housing preservation for our senior population who are homeowners?
Right, so we touched on housing and the funding sources for housing. A part of the partners that we do engage and give resources to that respond to the NOFA are specifically for owner-occupied rehab. Now, that program was, we had to put it on a hiatus due to COVID-19. You couldn't go into houses and the like. But that has been stood back up, but it is through the occupied owner. I said it right the first time? Owner-occupied rehab. Anything to add on that, Tyra? Okay, okay. Ms. Camille.
All right. How much money is allocated to fixing a massive flood problem? And where is it going specifically?
Massive flood problem, I don't, that's not specific enough. But what I will say, all this work in terms of infrastructure, that's dealing with flooding. And even, I would say, as it relates to areas of investment across the board, whether that's Sewer and Water Board, DPW and the like, as it relates to floodwater. And even if you think about it, the fund balance that Gilbert spoke about, meaning that, you know, in case of an emergency. So that is our rainy day fund that's there. It's not being touched. We are working with the city council to make sure that we really do reserve those dollars for as they're intended. But that is what those dollars are there for.
Okay, and just to springboard on that, Madam Mayor, someone wants to know about the improved flood resilience programs and how these projects are integrating advanced technologies, if at all.
Okay, I'm thinking they're talking, they're talking about our green infrastructure programs in terms of the systems, Mirabou Gardens and the like, Gentili Water, all of those.
All those.
Well, those are systems that are designed to work with and incorporate our canals, of course, our drains in terms of living with water on public property, holding that rainwater, preventing it from running right into the drains. These are systems that work on their own, but in conjunction with our utility that of the Sewer and Water Board, as well as, of course, of the Department of Public Works. But they are systems in key areas in the city, particularly those that took on the eighty percent of water that the city had during Hurricane Katrina, which, you know, this week will be nineteen years, next year twenty years ago. Yes. All right, Director, good job.
Sorry, I just wanted to.
You know, you all can raise your hand.
Wanted to chime in about technology. One of the things that.
Weather-wise and all.
Yeah, that we're working on with, with both United Way of Southeast Louisiana, Verizon Wireless, and a company called Hi-Fi out of Michigan is, this was reported on a few weeks ago. We're installing fifty real high-tech flood monitoring systems around the city. They've already installed three on some Sewer and Water Board canals. We've been working closely with Sewer and Water Board on this. They'll be installed in neighborhoods and in other locations geographically around the city where we'll be able to get real-time street flooding information. And, and this is important for two reasons. One, obviously, we want to know what the water is like while the incident is happening so that we can better respond, that we can deploy Public Works when necessary or Sewer and Water Board with vacuum trucks and, and the like to try and reduce the amount of street flooding in case we have to make rescues and emergencies. But I think equally as important is being able to, to keep this data and take it and use it to inform and fund future projects. And we're talking about green infrastructure and the ability to, to live with water in the city. So on the technology side, I think we're, we're one of the only cities in the, I think we're the only city in the country right now who is having this completely funded for the first year by Verizon Wireless. And it'll be, there'll be a lot of outreach done by United Way into the community about this system as it moves forward.
Sure, and thank you so much, Colin. And then as we invest, of course, on the utility side, being in terms of redundancy for pumps and all this is technology that we've never seen before, but is advancing the city of New Orleans. Anything to add there, Steve? Steve is our General Superintendent for the Sewer and Water Board.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Colin. I think that's absolutely critical. That's really important. It is all connected. It starts with the catch basins, the green infrastructure. The connection to the community and the Hi-Fi monitoring is really, really important. The power complex is another example of technology that's moving us from the technology of turbines, which has served us well for over a century, into dedicated power feed. Mayor, yourself, the council, state, state and local and federal partners have all put together a program that is putting that project online for June of next year. And very excited to see that technological improvement that's going to add resilience along with green infrastructure and these other components.
And that's tied into the work that we're doing with the power complex. It's critical and transformative. Ms. Camille.
Okay. How will you, Madam Mayor, ensure that the Algiers Canal Street Ferry System will continue to be funded in 2025 and remain in operation?
Okay, so that's a great question. And that is also on my list of things that I wanted to share towards the end. And I know it is getting towards the end. Some of these issues that we will have to deal with as a city, no matter who the mayor is, no matter who the city council is. And so next year's election year and everyone who's running, who wants to, needs to understand. No matter who they are, they will inherit these issues. They will not go away. We do have to find real solutions and it costs money. So this year, 2024, we've had to activate and I've given the approval of three million dollars to keep the ferries operational for 2024. Now, that does bring a shortfall of five million, I believe, as we look at 2025. Now, I just met with the leadership of RTA not too long ago, last week. This is a real problem and one that we have to figure out. I don't have that figured out as I stand here right now. We have not finalized the budget. And because, I would say, with the shift of when the budget has to now be submitted to the council, the council moved the date up to October the first instead of November one. And the way that it's, the way that it's impacted our revenue estimating conference, right? But we're staying on track with our conference. But the fact is, we don't have what that bottom line will be relative to revenue to work with. We don't know that number yet until we have that revenue estimating conference. And so this has been a challenge, I would say, of putting this budget together for 2025. These are issues that we raised prior to the council making this move and giving the vote to the public to approve. But again, these are just constraints that we're working through. So once we get to that revenue estimating conference, that'll give us a little more, more information. But it is an issue relative to the ferries for the city of New Orleans. We have to think outside the box. We will, in terms of funding sources, no doubt. How can we increase even ridership? You know, we always wanted the fairs, fairs will on the other side of the Algiers, where the Algiers Ferry is, to get some rider, getting people, activating places for our people to go and particularly visitors when they come so that they get on that ferry. It is, again, a work in progress.
All right, now let's move to youth programming, community development, where NOR is concerned, skate parks specifically as the newest addition to NORD. We need financial backing. What will be NORD's priorities?
Well, NORD's priority will always be, of course, focused on our youth. But with NOR, we're focused on everyone. There has to be something for everyone in terms of our youth, but also our seniors and everyone in between. And so we will continue to invest, but we also want to stand up. We have a foundation for NORD that was created prior to this administration. and we really need to do good by it as a community, as a city, to get resources in there to offset some of the expenses of NORD. But I would say we're growing, we're mighty, and we're growing strong. We're putting rec centers back online. But even most importantly, or more importantly, just the role of NORD has shifted. It's shifted tremendously relative to how we adapt to climate that has changed. We now use our rec centers as heating, you know, as cooling centers. We use our rec centers to respond to any disasters that we have in our community. And when we do that, it means our employees, NORD employees, show up as first responders and making sure that they're there to meet our folks where they are. Larry, I'm looking at you. This is your shot. Anything you want to add? You know, Directors, you can kind of raise your hand and say, oh, me, me, me.
So, so, good evening. So the question that, that was posed is about infrastructures, about a skate park, right? So what I always tell constituents when I talk to them is just talk to your state legislators, right? You can always talk to your state legislators and ask them to put some capital outlay funds in the budget for the city of New Orleans to build out different things that you would like to see in your community, right? So it's not always about just making sure that the city do it, but making sure that our state legislators understand the amenities you want in your communities and you're talking to them about putting funding in the capital outlay budget as well as state appropriated funds to help us out to build different things that you want to see in your community.
Now, Larry, now, we have great partners with the state legislators and especially as it relates to capital outlay, which you're encouraging, right? So can you just share some of those projects? And what we changed around as it relates to these capital outlay projects? We've supported projects, meaning the city, that the city can make sure that once the capital outlay dollars are there, that the city of New Orleans is ready to execute. No more of this capital outlay sitting there, sitting there, sitting there, and the city isn't ready. We've changed the game. Talk about it, Larry.
Absolutely. And that was one of the challenges that the city faced in the past where that state legislators would tell you, hey, I've given the city money in the past under previous administrations for capital outlay, but the money sat there. And it sat there so long that we pulled the money back, right? Well, that doesn't exist anymore. Because right now, when the capital outlay money is given to the city specifically for NORD, we make sure that we're on top of it. We're doing all of the paperwork that's needed with the state and we're engaged with capital projects to make sure that we can get architects and engineers on board and we're moving forward with the projects as expeditiously as possible, right? So if you're talking to any of your state legislators and they're saying, hey, we've given money in the past and capital outlay and it's sat there, well, that doesn't happen under this administration. I'm definitely proud to say that we work, NOR works closely with capital projects and we move forward as expeditiously as possible with any funding that we receive on any project.
Yeah, but you talk about splash parks. I'm talking about like, none of them.
Yes, yes, yes. So with that, yes, so with that, right now, we just, we just, with capital outlay funds, we just renovated Carver Playground uptown and also we're doing a turf field uptown at Carver Playground. With capital outlay funds, we just did a basketball court, one of the basketball court up in New Orleans East. Also, we're looking at doing a splash pad up in, in the Villas de Les community. And so it's a host of different projects that we're doing through NOR, with capital outlay funds. And you know, on top of that, I'm grateful to the mayor because they're always putting bond funds on top of that to make sure that we're able to cover the shortfalls of any project, but we definitely have a host of projects. We just built an all-inclusive play structure near Gurnon Brown Playground. That was done with capital outlay funds. So I can go on and on with that because our state legislators have definitely been in supportive under this administration, specifically I could speak to with NORD, but still, we can continue to grow and build as you guys talk to your legislators about continuously supporting NOR.
Thank you, Larry. I think I beat that horse enough. All right. Like I tell my people, where my stick at? Where my stick? Beat him enough. Thank you, Larry. You're always right on time. And even I just signed on today, the agreement between the, these are for ARPA funds, for the Ninth Ward Stadium in partnership with the Orleans Parish School, School Board. So that's going to be done. Just sign that on today. Ms. Camille.
All right, we have several about public transit. Once again, better, more frequent stops perhaps. And the public transit between parishes is quite lacking. It feels like RTA fails to focus on anything other than downtown.
Okay, well, RTA, I will say, there is a transit plan that was created by the public. It was a pretty robust process that engaged the public in regards to it. It's due links. And so we will take that and I will get with Ms. Lana Hankins about it. But I know transportation will continue to be a priority for the city of New Orleans. We have new buses on the street, you know? I mean, and they're energy efficient and we have, I believe, over 17 more coming. So things are happening and even as it relates to investing in our streetcar. Ms. Camille.
Do we have a long-term solution to the salt water intrusion problem?
No. What we do, we do have, we have a long-term solution that was created and put on the table by the city of New Orleans when we had the salt water intrusion, right? That's what we're talking about, right? Salt water intrusion. Okay? And so on Monday, which was yesterday, at my public safety meeting, Colin told me that, oh, here comes assault. It's coming on in key areas. No threat to us right now, but as I said in that meeting, we have to push for the long-term solution and we are doing that at the federal level. We've never wavered from that since the first encounter. Because again, it's not a matter of if, it's when. And so that river is getting a little low right now. Colin, anything to add on it? You know, the city of New Orleans provided water for cities, for parishes when that happened. Plaquemines, which one? St. Bernard?
For Jefferson.
Yeah.
And for St. Bernard. We're definitely working with our regional partners again. We've convened weekly calls with Corps of Engineers, the state, and all of our regional parish partners. It does appear that, you know, Plaquemines down in Boothville could be impacted here relatively shortly. The Corps of Engineers will again build a sill in the same location they did last year. And from what we're seeing right now, we don't believe New Orleans area will be impacted either East or West Bank. Well, obviously, we just have to keep watching. The city, through our Hazard Mitigation Office, led a proposal that was approved by FEMA to provide technical assistance from the federal government in order to work with all of the parishes in this area that could be affected by this and come up with a solution. And what we have heard is positive that the federal government does want to solve this permanently and make this not a problem anymore. And so we're going to continue to work towards that end as the mayor has directed us to do.
Thank you, Colin. Ms. Camille.
All right, I have one question, I'm sorry, three questions I'm going to consolidate into one. There's a group called the Big Easy Budget Coalition. They're a group of community members and organizations with the priority of investing in thriving communities and addressing the root cause of violence. They want to know how they can get in front of you other than at this forum and how will you incorporate their input? Add to that, how is the mayor and the council working to make the budget process more transparent and accessible to people all across the city? Add to that, how will input from this hearing impact the budget?
Sure. So what I will say is impact. We are listening. We have the leadership here at every level listening as they produce their budgets and provide them really to, to, to me so that we're coming up with a proposed budget that will be submitted to the New Orleans City Council. Right now, we've gotten requests from every department and Gilbert, we're, the requests coming in, I mean, hundreds of millions over. So, but this is the process, right? This is the process that we're doing right now. And for, for this budget meeting, it's also activated Zoom. So we have a listening and a viewing audience and of course, those who are physically in the space. But this is only the first step, I would say. The New Orleans City Council, once that proposed budget is submitted to the council, the council has, I mean, their budget hearings, countless budget hearings from every single department goes before the council. And at the end of the day, the city council adopts a budget as they have listened also to the public. So working together is the way, and I believe that we're doing that right now.
And then this group that wants to get in front of you, what can they do to have their voices heard?
Well, they can come, they can meet with me. I'm accessible, have a meeting, you know, do, send me an email. That's easiest, I would say, to schedule. I check my own emails, mayorcantrell@nola.gov. I do not have a backlog and, and that's just my way. That's my way of keeping me honest and others as well. But I check it myself, I'll get it and I will respond.
Last year, the city budgeted more of the general fund to NOPD alone than youth, health combined. Will this year be different?
Well, NOPD's budget in terms of public safety, well, public safety was a top priority, no doubt. And so we invested heavily, both our general fund dollars as well as federal dollars that we were able to receive and leverage directly. We will continue to invest in NOPD. But of course, as you've made the investment, then that allows you to kind of step on back and not have to make that same investment the next year. So like Fleet, for example, millions of dollars in Fleet. Again, not just for NOPD, but across the board. But what we're doing to manage our assets, if you will, where that we are embracing a management, what do we call that? It's asset, I got it backwards, that's my dyslexia again. But an asset management system so that the city of New Orleans can be able to, one, track their assets when they need to maintain their assets over time. So it's not a car breaks down, how are we going to get it fixed? You should know the mileage, you should know when it should run offline. And so this is what we're wanting to set up for the city of New Orleans. Again, I mentioned us being forward-thinking. I mentioned that we're looking at, again, year after year, but how the city can be better than how we found her. And so what we knew was not in place was that we just didn't have a, we didn't have anything that managed the assets from vehicles to buildings, anywhere we place our money, technology, but now we're building that system again that will live with the city long-term and you won't know, you know, you won't have to look for how you're going to fill up the gas tank, you know, after it's run out. Like you should know when you're getting on empty, way before you're on empty. That's what we're trying to build for the city of New Orleans.
What is the admin-
No, go ahead.
Okay. What is the administration doing to address blatant lack of enforcement for tons of quality of life issues in the city? For example, keeping the city clean of trash, human waste on the streets, homelessness, we discussed blighted property, illegal parking, blocking fire trucks from turning into the French Quarter, maintaining catch basins, maintaining traffic lights, funding code sweeps.
Right, I think we've talked about every single area relative to that question. But I will say, it speaks to the investment that you all, that we have made in code enforcement and where that shows up in multiple departments. It's necessary that we continue to not only fund, but guess what? We have to build our capacity. We need more people working in city government. So if you don't have people working, then guess what? Your services will be impacted. And it just, the work doesn't happen by magic. It's real people doing the job. And it's the same people that's been holding this city down over all the issues that I said that we've worked through, it's the same people. They're not Superman or Superwoman, but they're hard-working individuals and we need more of them. That's how we'll get more done, you know, when we can, we can go faster if we go together and we need more people who want to go together.
Okay, Madam Mayor, this is our final question for the evening. How are local initiatives in New Orleans leveraging programming and technology education to empower our youth? And what impacts have these programs had on the community? What percentage will the city increase funding for youth programming?
Right, so youth programming, we believe that we are investing heavily and heavily in areas that we have never done before, particularly relative to the ARPA money. We know that it's one-time money, but we're going deep with that one-time money and being very holistic in terms of how we invest in youth and utilize their voice about what they want to continue to invest. And we're leveraging every dollar, even as it relates to Wisner money. I had to tap in and with the approval of the council and support of the council, we were able to go deep, even with NOR. When the young people said, listen, we want our own festival, you know, we want a talent show. You know, when I would go, I'm in schools all the time. This is what we want. And I said, okay, got with Larry, with NOR, and we activated Wisner money and our young people are engaged in ways that they've never been before. The Mayor's Office of Youth and Families was created by executive order and Ms. Asia Howlett is here to speak on behalf of the office.
Wonderful. Hey, y'all. Couple of things that I did want to name that are in the works right now. So one of the things that keeps coming up is the question about what exists in the city, where it exists in the city, how much of it do we have? What's the capacity for it to serve young people in any given space? And so what we've actually been building in partnership with the New Orleans Youth Alliance and the Children's Planning Board through the Youth Master Plan is a database that will hold this information. And so it's going to be over this year and the coming years that we will be building this out with y'all's partnership. So I want you to know that that is something that we're aware of to help inform how we make our decisions. So what we don't want to see happen is that by any fluke of what's happening in the world, people decide that we need to be doing this thing. We actually want to have some data that supports. We do not have any, anything in the realm of the arts, right? So if we say this doesn't exist in the realm of the arts, how do we make sure that we have additional funding for that thing? How do we make sure that funding exists in New Orleans East? How do we make sure that it exists in Algiers? How do we make sure that those things are across the board? So we're trying to make sure that we're intentional about what exists where, having an actual catalog of those things. And then also making sure that the funding that is requested of council matches the things that we actually know exist in the city. Now, I just said that that's going to be happening over the next few years of building this out because this is really talking about the infrastructure of our city long-term. But what you can expect in the next month, so in September, is a resource and program guide that is, lives on the internet. It is for free and all of you can access it. Your young people can access it, schools, each of you, families. And what it holds is every single program that we are aware of in the city of New Orleans. So you can say, hey, I'm looking for something in this age group, in this area of the city, and then it will populate it for you. So you don't have to keep digging for this information. And we're also using this to make sure that, again, if it doesn't exist in any given place, then we can say, hey, council, we recognize that a lot of money has gone into this area, but we do see a deficit in these areas as it relates to youth programming. And so this will be something that holds NOR information, library information, the Children's Museum, literally any program you can think of that serves young people is already being populated into this and it will be accessible to the city of New Orleans next month.
And the programs that the city offers for youth can be found on the website as well at nola.gov, but we also have a specific website for youth programming that's been funded by ARPA. Everything ARPA, we have a website you can see exactly and it's in real time because we want it to be transparent in terms of how we are utilizing those dollars. Also, as it relates to youth, the culture, when we talked about the investment, fair share money and directly into culture, we have carved out dollars for our young people and Ms. Lisa Alexis will speak to that.
Yes, thank you. And in partnership with Asia Howlett, we just want you to know that we love our youth and support our youth. And the cultural dollars have supported over a million dollars in funding to youth on last year to this year. And we also have a grant that is out for all of the schools to receive. Up to 60 schools may receive a $10,000 grant. And that grant doesn't close until September 30th because we wanted to allow school to start. And we opened that up over the summer so those could prepare. So I just wanted to share that there are, I think we've only received maybe eight to 10 schools. So there are more schools that can apply for funding and there are also dollars that are set aside and earmarked from the cultural realm of $250,000 more for this year for youth.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Lisa. What I wanted to just speak briefly about in addition to investments in our young people are areas of this. Now, you know that we started out funding early childhood education seats so that we can prove to the public that when we invest in our young people at the earliest ages zero to three, that's going to be a game changer for the city of New Orleans. Because we did that, we were able to make the case to the public to approve a 20-year mileage for early learning seats in this city. The public, you all voted for that overwhelmingly, 75% of the vote, but that's a 20-year investment that will be made into young people in the city of New Orleans and that is directly into families. That is huge. And without a doubt, I know 20 years from now, we look at the data, we should be able to see how we have moved and changed the lives of our people. In addition to that, we have funded what we call the Family Connects Program. This is under our Health Department. And what this is, now, when I visited Cuba, I took a delegation to Cuba in 2019. All hell broke loose, boy, when I took that delegation to Cuba. Oh, my goodness, you thought it never happened before. Anyway, you know, I'm the first mayor that's ever traveled anywhere. Anyway, let me be quiet. So going to Cuba, learning directly from them about how they deal with families, but particularly women who are expecting. They do wraparound and holistic approach. And so I came back here, I said, Dr. Vecno, we got to do something about this. Well, the opportunity became, we didn't stop doing the work, trying to figure it out, but we were really able to bring this project to fruition by utilizing our ARPA dollars. So what's happening right now in the city of New Orleans and one of the only cities in the US of A? Well, when that mother and that family gets home after a week after having that baby, we birth about 3,000 babies a year in the city. But after that week that family gets home, they're getting visited by registered- home, they're getting visited by a registered nurse right here in our city. But see, that's our way in. It's a big deal. You know, it really is, because when you think about maternal health, that's the whole issue here. But when you think about maternal health in this country, Louisiana's at the top. And when you look at Louisiana, you see New Orleans. And so, we were saying, "And, Dr. Vecno, we have to do something. These are our families, these are our babies, we talk about public safety, but it has to be, again, through the lens of public health." So, right now, in our city, this is happening, and we continue to visit. And I believe it was three weeks, but it can go up to 12 weeks, but we're in there. But my goal was, get in there. But once we're in that door and thinking holistically, we can say, "Okay, this baby needs that early learning seat. Wait a minute, this, they need a quality, affordable house to be in. Wait a minute, who needs a job in here? Who's sleeping on the couch because they really are homeless, but they're not counted because they're not sleeping on the street? Like, who's suffering from mental health? Like, all of these things are tied and connected." But as I started, this city and her budget, since our administration has always thought about this holistically, because that's the only way that we're going to build this city to thrive for generations to come. Before I end, I want to say thank you so much for just your attention, thank you for being here. We hope that you continue to use your voice elevated in the budget process, no doubt about that. Never hesitate reaching out directly. Mayor Cantrell@nola.gov, like I said, I check it myself. But I wanted to leave you with some things to just think about that have been touched on just a little here this evening, but we'll have to do something about it. And again, no matter who the mayor is, no matter who the council is, these are issues that we will have to address. We talked about the ferries already, that was one area. But I also wanted to speak about, and I mentioned this a little earlier, that 53 million that we're spending in sanitation, again, no increase anywhere in terms of the fees associated with that, but that's an expense, and it's reoccurring, and it will have an impact. We'll have to deal with that and address that. We also have the issue, I would say, dealing with, dealing with, um, EMFERS. And so, this is, um, this was a state law that was passed, I believe some of the members of the council were actually on state legislative at this time. But what it did and how it's hitting home now, our EMFERS, um, a payment has increased from 50, give me straight on this, Romy, 50 million to 250 million. This is real. You can't make it up. This is real. And it's only impacting the city of New Orleans in this manner. But it was a state law that only impacts Orleans Parish. And so, we're fighting it in litigation. I probably need to be quiet, city attorney, I don't want to look at you, and you talk too much. But what I will say, it is in litigation, and we're making sure that we're protecting ourselves, but we just can't stand by. While we're working on retention, on retention, yes, but we're also working on recruitment, so we're getting those numbers up in terms of our force, but that is the trigger there. Depending on how many offices we have, this is where this kicks in. Only Orleans Parish, from 50 million to 250 million. And then, I get the emails saying, "Oh, wait a minute, your payment, um, is not full." Romy, anything to add? Okay, let me just tell me to be quiet. Okay. So, you can't make this stuff up. And so, I just wanted you all to, to know that the issues that we face and the challenges that we face, they are real, but I hope you understand that we're doing something about it. And it also speaks to how we have been able to leverage federal dollar. And over the course of some years, and even yesterday, getting the award from EPA of $50 million for the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, our city got that. $55 million from DOE for the replacement of the energy grid. Remember, we lost that grid during IDA, and the investments we need to have made there, 50, um, 55 million. 250 million allocated to the state of Louisiana for resilience hubs, New Orleans will have one of them, but we were awarded the 250 million because of the data and the work in the city of New Orleans. Because we had done the work, it really did build out that application that went to the federal government, and we won. 3.9 million from EPA Solid Waste Infrastructure, and that's for recycling. 8 million, I mentioned that, from community in terms of urban forestry. And it really, the list just goes on and on. So, we're doing the work in terms of going after grants, we have people working on this every day, but wanting to leverage every dollar we get. So, anything that I've left out, Gilbert, Romy, before I close? Nope. Cliff, anything? All right, all right, very good. So, I haven't left out anything, I just want to say again, yep. Oh, councilman, I'm sorry to see you. You want to say? You always want to say something. Go ahead. Give it up for Councilman Green. Yeah, we in his hood, and he's always right on time.
Well, you know, I'm not going to say that much, because this meeting has spoken for itself. I am going to take a picture, because I'm going to share with all the people out there who should have attended. But I do want to say this, I wasn't going to say anything, but I do want to say this, I am so proud to be in a district where the crime rate has been reduced in a drastic manner. And many times, I've heard, like- And the most important thing that people talk to me about all the time is public safety, feeling comfortable when they go out to various locations, feeling comfortable in their houses. Our city has the second-largest decrease in the rate of homicides in the nation, so we are no longer the murder capital of the world, and we have-
And we're not going back.
We're not going back. Right, that, right. That was the slogan this week for our new presidential candidate. But I do want to say this, I do want to say this, I'm so pleased to represent this district at this time, and thank you, Mr. CAO, I really wasn't going to say much, but I do want to say this, we are near an area where there is so much going on, whether it be the new Ashner Clinic, whether it be the $141 million Gentile Resilience District, whether it be two businesses that took over that vacant building on Chef Montour Highway, we have a housing construction boom going on in our district right now. And I think that's because people feel very, very comfortable. But I always want to recognize, because I see the videos and I go to places where the members of our New Orleans Police Department are out there working every day, and some of them have even been injured in the line of work. So, I'm going to ask everyone here to give a round of applause to the members of the New Orleans Police Department. Outstanding work, because if it weren't going in that direction, everybody would be blaming the white and blue. So, let's give them the recognition when things are going well, and I want to thank them. But, Madam Mayor, I'm so pleased to work with you. There's a lot that was said today indirectly, but when the mayor puts something before the council, I think that the council has been very, very flexible in terms of funding what some of the initiatives are, including recreation and for our youth. So, I do want to say this, there is a lot going on that is very good in the city of New Orleans. I'm pleased to raise my three children walking distant from here. I see a lot going on relative to the future, and things are going well. I look forward to this budget cycle, because there's going to be some very productive work that comes out of it. But thank you all for the great numbers of citizens who have shown up today. How about that, Madam Mayor?
That's great.
Thank you all for your work. I appreciate it.
And councilman, you running again for your seat, right?
Uh-oh, yeah.
Go ahead, that's it. Yeah, you got to keep good things going.
Yes, I am pleased to say that I feel the progress that we've made in this particular district, and that I look forward to continuing to serve our citizens.
That's right. That's right, absolutely. And then, I know Chief, Chief, Chief wants, Chief, you want to say something? Oh, Commissioner wanted me to acknowledge that Chief Kirkpatrick, this is her first budget. Yeah, oh, yeah. First of a lot of things, I'm sure, in the city of New Orleans, all right? But let's give it up again for the New Orleans Police Department. It is no question, in terms of the hard work that you all, the members that you all represent, we know that it's the platoon as well, boots on the ground, and we're going to continue to support them every step, no doubt about that. But I have no question about how we got here. It's been through our department, but it's also been how we have put our money where the needs are, and we've gone deep, and we will continue to go deep. And I just say thank you for how you're leading the men and women of the New Orleans Police Department from my heart. Absolutely. So, with that, um, I believe we're adjourned. All right, meeting adjourned. All right, thank y'all.